It was so hot. Then that little rain came, it was a blessing.
Yeah, right? A little bit.
I think I go outside, it's cooler outside now. It's eighty something degrees in my house.
So watch your living hazards.
Dave Ward Drive has been withdrawn, so if you came here for that, you can feel free to leave. We're not going to discuss that tonight.
I have not heard from anybody. I didn't check my emails or anything. You put it all away.
I'll give them about another minute. Ann, do you want to keep time, or do you want me to?
I would be happy to.
Thank you. There she is.
We're going to make it awkwardly silent as you walk across the room.
Everybody's going to stare at you, so I noticed.
All right, it's seven o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. The Conway Planning Commission makes recommendations to the City Council on public hearing items. The City Council will make a final decision on these items using the Planning Commission recommendations as a guide. Items reviewed at tonight's Planning Commission may be considered by the City Council on the June, I mean July twenty-fourth, 2018 meeting. Items not approved by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council within thirty days after Planning Commission denial. If an item is appealed to the City Council, a public notice sign will be placed on the property at least seven days prior to the City Council meeting, and a public notice will be placed on the city's website, All right. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the May twenty-first meeting since we suspended the June meeting.
Make a motion to it, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the June, or May minutes? There is a motion on the floor. Has been seconded to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Again, I'll go slightly out of order here. I just want to mention again, for the record, that Item D1, which is the Sorry, let me get over here and read the full title. Request for conditional use permit in RU1-1550 East, Dave Ward Drive, has been withdrawn. So we will not be discussing that tonight. Now, let me back up and receive the report for subdivision committee.
Yes, we met today to discuss two items. One was a secondary review of the item that we discussed in the subdivision committee during our June eighteenth meeting of the committee. That was for the station house addition request. We approved two items for that subdivision request, and that was around a new boundary street, as well as approving block lengths that were slightly that slightly deviated from the normal standard. The second one was for Freyaldenhoven subdivision, request for preliminary private approval. Both of those items were approved unanimously. There were no further items for the subdivision committee.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to the public hearing portion of the meeting, the first item on the agenda is Request D2. Request a rezone from A1 to RU1-2010 Salem Road. Do we have any, so before we get into this, I'll set some ground rules for this meeting. The first applicant, or the first person to speak in favor of each topic will be granted ten minutes. Each subsequent person will be granted two. The first person to speak in opposition of each topic will be granted ten minutes, and each subsequent person will be granted two. So organize your thoughts, please. As you approach the podium, please state your name and your address for public record. Do we have anybody to speak in favor?
In favor.
I'm not on that side of the table.
He can go first, he's in favor.
Just before Mitch gets up here, I just want to pop it here to say the emails that y'all received today, a lot of those were addressed to Jason Lyon, and y'all may have got some things saying he was out of the office, but they were all forwarded on to us from Jason. So every one of the emails that were sent were forwarded on to the Planning Commission. So I just want everybody to know that everything that was sent, they've gotten.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
My name is Mitch Hart. I live at fourteen oh one Hogan Lane in Conway. I'm here to speak in favor of this request. How is it, most of you know, I hope you know, I'm a licensed realtor in Conway, and I was contracted by the McAlire family to market their property for them. All the McAlires own this property, and it's a oh, it's a AT, currently it's an AT&amp;T service center. Based on the lease agreement they provided me, I think the service center was, the first lease was from nineteen seventy-seven. So the McAlires purchased the property in nineteen eighty-seven, based on this lease information, and they have owned it since. All they've obviously, since eighty-seven, they've, they're older now, they're retirement age. They wanted to make their life simpler, so they contracted me as their realtor to market the property and sell it for them. All right, so as far as I know, this property's been an AT&amp;T service center, Southwestern Bell Service Center, since sometime in the seventies. So it's currently, as I understand it, it's when we checked the zoning, it was agriculture zoning, but I guess this business is actually grandfathered in because it's been here for so long. That's the way Brian explained it to me. So before we sold it, the buyers, oh, the Wilson family, owns Computer Works, they felt like it was probably a good idea to go ahead and and get the property rezoned to its proper use before they purchased it. Currently, AT&amp;T has a lease on the property. Like I said, the lease started in the seventies, and it gets renewed every so often, about every five years. So they're currently under lease through, through late twenty-twenty, October. And it will, at which point they have the option of renewing the lease or letting it go. All right. So our basic intent was to try to find a zoning that would satisfy the existing use of the property to allow AT&amp;T to stay there. In addition to anything, if they did not renew their lease and the Computer Works ended up taking over the facility, we wanted to put down a zoning that would work for the computer. All right? For their company business, if they wanted to take the property over. So, of course, I always start with Brian. I went to Brian and said, Brian, what's the least intrusive zoning that would allow for this use? And once we went through the zoning book, which y'all have all seen, right? He felt like, we felt like RU, oh, you had I1, you know, I3, heavy industrial. He felt like RU1 Restricted Use District was the best zoning that worked for the, you know, AT&amp;T as a service center. So we pulled the book out, and we picked all the potential uses that we felt like the building was being used for, as it existed today, as best we could, and we put, you know, we added those as conditional uses because we didn't want to make the mistake and be under, you know, and get them in trouble, you know, at this point, with the wrong zoning. So the RU zoning is restricted manufacturing, clean and quiet industries that are in proximity to residential developments. It was very important to us to pick something that was congruent with the neighbors, which there's at least three different subdivisions that are in proximity. Royal Oaks, one direction. Steeplechase, the other direction. Jeremy Cove, back behind it. Back to the north, you've got RU1 already there with existing, you know, pretty much heavy industrial use there. So we wanted to pick something that was congruent with the neighborhood as it existed. We understood that, to my knowledge, they were there first. You know, I think the Royal Oaks was in early nineties, Steeplechase was in the nineties. Jeremy Cove was probably oh-six, oh-seven. So they, and I'm hopeful that they've been a good neighbor. It seemed like they've got, I don't know how many employees they have over there. It seemed like they have fifteen or twenty employees that come and go. Like I said, I hope they've been a good neighbor. But with Brian's help, we picked out an acceptable zoning that we felt was best we could do with existing use of the property, and here we are. So, given that, do y'all have any specific questions that y'all had for me?
I do not about the rezoning request, but I will for you when you come back up for the next item around the conditional use permit.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Oh, I'd like to introduce the Wilson family there. They're the purchaser of the property, and I'd like them to share kind of what their intention is with the properties, the buyer, and let them share that with you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there any doubt or that AT&amp;T won't renew the lease?
At this point, there's, there's, you don't know. The lease agreement says that, you know, they have the option to renew. So all that's up to AT&amp;T, and if you've ever dealt with AT&amp;T, it's, you know, we're not a hundred percent, you can't ever say until they sign the documents. That's basically the way it works.
If they do, this is kind of a moot point, because it stays where it is.
Yeah, it's my understanding, oh, I don't know, after talking to AT&amp;T, by the way, they said they liked the facility. You know, they've got employees there, their employees like working there, they have a lot of jobs that they've got here in Conway, and they don't want to move those jobs.
Don't they have a lot of big equipment there?
They got a bunch of big equipment.
Big, huge trucks and big, huge trailers.
They got big, huge trucks and big, huge trailers. They got all that.
Where they are digging lines, and one hour drive by, that's what I always say.
They have service trucks that they use, they do a lot of fiber optic work. They do a lot of fiber optic work, and they repair, whenever the, by the way, whenever your internet service goes out, because they tore up a line between here and Little Rock, they're the ones that fix it. So they like this area.
And did you say that if they don't renew the lease, Computer Works is the potential?
User, yes, that's correct. Correct? All right. Any other questions for me?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch.
We've got five minutes left on this particular, I guess, we can start over, whatever you.
Start over.
Start over?
Yeah.
I'll start over.
Hi, I'm Jackson Wilson, I'm representing the Computer Works. I'm the marketing director there for them.
Can you give us your address, please?
Nine Valley Ridge, Conway.
Thank you.
Computer Works was founded in nineteen eighty-nine by my dad and my aunt. It slowly morphed from a computer store into an internet service provider. And so we do similar work that AT&amp;T is doing now. And so, you know, if, as Mitch touched on, if they decide, if we can't work out an agreement with the new lease, then we have the option to move there. And so, as he stated, this is really what we feel like would fit us best, and AT&amp;T, since we're doing a similar thing. We've, like I said, nineteen eighty-nine, we employ over thirty-five people here in Conway, and we hope to continue to grow and expand our business.
Y'all have the same big equipment that AT&amp;T has? Are y'all actually doing, laying fiber and all that?
Yes, sir. Two years ago, we started laying fiber optic cable in Valonia. And so we have a construction company that we run as well, and we've got boring machines and Bobcats heavy equipment that would be parked there. In normal business hours, it's not like it's going to be at midnight, driving big equipment around.
Like a Monday through Friday?
Yes, sir. Yeah, Monday through Thursday for the construction company.
About a drive-through, I mean, y'all don't need a drive-through, do you?
Well, that was put in there just planning, if we ever decide to have some sort of drive-through for customers to pay their internet bills. That was something we just wrote in there, just in case.
Have you seen work?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it, okay.
Any more questions? Not at the moment, no. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else to speak in favor? All right. Anybody speaking in opposition? This is of the zoning.
My name is Jim Matheny, and I live at nineteen forty Royal Drive. Hello, neighbors. And I don't say that without the intent of saying that's what this is all about. How do we, as neighbors, make sure that we do not do something that's going to negatively affect our property rights or property value? And I believe that this would negatively affect our property value. My house, if you stand in the kitchen, and you've been there, or if you look out my backyard, I directly face the AT&amp;T facility. It has quite a bit of traffic right now. Since you, I don't know how they got the picture of this thing without any cars on it that was in your, the PDF that I saw, because I went out there eleven o'clock today and took a snapshot, and there's twelve cars parked there. There's always traffic going in and out of there, it's often used as they turn around these days. Many times, there's an eighteen-wheeler that's parked out there, the engine running for many hours, and it's parked there for multiple days upon, on end. It's an eyesore as it is. If I'd have ever thought that it would have done any good to complain about the eyesore or the traffic coming in and out there, I would have already said something about it. I don't think that necessarily that's a good neighbor, considering the fact that you've got subdivisions on three sides of this thing. The request, requested RU1 is not congruent with the city's growth plan, which was paid big bucks for, by the way. The request would allow restricted retail adjacent to established residential zones without providing for a buffer for the residents. The biggest concern would be the requested zoning allows restricted retail. If fully developed by the use, up to thirty-two-hundred-and-fifty-six vehicle trips per day could be expected. Even if you put in a condition, the zoning would make the property more valuable and much more likely to sell to someone looking to build a strip center located in this area sooner or later. I did a five-minute count of cars driving by my house from eleven fifty a.m. today to eleven fifty-five. That was sixty-five cars in a non-peak timeframe. That comes to seven-hundred-and-eighty cars per hour. Six-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty cars in an eight-hour period. This is not school time. That's not accounting for heavy increase to traffic in the morning and evening or the to and from work traffic. Traffic stays very heavy until at least nine p.m. on the average evening. In just a twelve-hour period, that comes to around nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty cars passing by. I would submit that the last traffic report for the area was at is way outdated in just a year, due to the opening of that to the freeway. And that the actual number of cars currently passing by there is much closer to fifteen thousand to twenty thousand than the current ten thousand that was of the two thousand and seventeen assessment that was done. I believe this negatively will almost immediately negatively affect my property values. And in so doing, it's going to negatively affect the entire property value for all of the subdivision that I live in. I'm very concerned about having a retail facility there right now. I mean, the AT&amp;T facility was grandfathered in. It's something that I said okay to when I bought the house, that was a decision I knowingly made. This completely changes that landscape of thought, and I would be forced to sell my house before the property value starts going down. Not to mention the construction that would be being done in the meantime to build the center that he's looking to put in. And the fact that they even wanted to put in a drive-through window or drive-through payment area concerns me, too. I'm just very concerned about this, and I hope you will look at this as if this was your property that was overlooking this facility. Thank you for your time.
I have some questions for you, sir.
You go right ahead.
So as I'm understanding your concern is that you are concerned that this could morph into something that it is not currently? Because you stated that you bought your house with the understanding that the AT&amp;T facility is there today. So if it does not change the type of business that it does tomorrow and next month and next year, how do you feel that that negatively immediately impacts your home's value?
Well, I don't know of any company in the world that doesn't market for and try to increase their business. This gentleman just mentioned that he has a very vibrant and growing business, and that is going to continue to expand, as that expands, the traffic expands. It's an eyesore as it is, but at least A&amp;T keeps all of their vehicles and stuff back behind the building. They don't use it that much these days. The last time I saw any major group of AT&amp;T personnel coming over there was when they were trying to provide assistance to some of the hurricane relief efforts. And they came in here and there and grabbed our trailers and all that equipment. That stuff's not visible today, it's back there behind that building. I'm concerned that if you rezon this and you make it, you take it to a commercial today, that only leads to more enhanced commercial usage down the road, and also it increases the traffic flow out there.
So the concern that you have around the noise and the activity that there is to, that is at the property today has nothing to do with the AT&amp;T facility. You're saying that the extra noise and traffic that is coming from, is coming from the general public and not from the actual use of the business today?
No, no, I'm saying it's it's neither one and the same. I'm saying I'm concerned, I'm concerned about, I don't like it the way it is today. I mean, it's noisy out there today, there's a lot of traffic, I don't like that eighteen-wheeler sitting out there.
And where is, where is the noise coming from? Because you just stated that the AT&amp;T rarely uses the facility today. So I think that that's why, because each time I've driven by this week, and even in the past, and used to living by the facility myself, I didn't even know it was an AT&amp;T facility until I read this to the description a couple of weeks ago, once I got the booklet.
Where's the noise coming from? It's coming from that area.
Okay, thank you.
Delancia?
Oh, Mr. Matheny, I just wanted to find out, how long have you been at that residence?
Since two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and ten?
Yes, ma'am. It was in full operation, pretty much full operation there when I moved, and it is much more tolerable today than it was. I can see this getting back to where it was, is worse than it was when I first moved in. I didn't pay as much attention to it as I should have when I bought that house. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Oh, no.
Come on up, sir.
Hey, how are y'all?
Good, how are you?
I am Jay Winborn, I live at twenty-nine fifty Franklin Circle. That's in the Royal Oaks Crooked Creep subdivision. That's in the Royal Oaks Crooked Creek subdivision. I am the president of the homeowners association right now. You got a lot of emails today because of some traffic that we got today. I think Jim has very good points. I agree with most of them, and I think a lot of the main concerns are going to be you're, you've got a, a location now that is supposedly, it was grandfathered in, long-term plan, it's supposed to be residential, but now we want to change it and tweak it just a little bit. And once that change is made, then the door opens to all sorts of things that can go on that property. That's our concerns. We think that will affect our property values long-term, and our association is against it.
So let me, let me ask you this question. Because we had quite, we have plenty of requests come through us month to month in regards to subdivisions, as well as requests just like these. Inevitably, the first issue that comes up anytime a brand-new subdivision comes in is this is going to increase the, the traffic, they're going to use my subdivision as a turnaround or a cut-through. Any of the number of concerns that you have today are also possible concerns that you have tomorrow. This is 4.24 acres. I don't know the exact number of houses you can put on that.
Well, we, well, I don't know. We, we're concerned with 300 members.
Right, but the homes that you could put on that facility, if it turned into a single-family residential, would still have significant impact on the number of cars that are driving down the road, the noise that are, that is coming from the traffic that's driving down the road. So I'm, I'm having a, a time understanding the, the specific concern.
But it's not, a residential is not commercial. There are certain things that are associated with commercial businesses, more lighting, more noise, more exhaust, more traffic going in in terms of, you know, if it's, it's, from my experience, if it's a controlled neighborhood, it's controlled a little better to try to get in and out of it. If it's a commercial place of business, it's not so much, not in my experience.
So if we were able to put certain limits on the commercial usage, such as hours of operation, that way, any of the traffic from the heavy equipment or any of the noise that would come, would come during, say, hypothetical, completely hypothetical, eight to five is what we put on it. That doesn't, or that alleviates some of the concern that you have that you, I can't protect you within residential. I can't tell a resident, you can only have any noise from eight to five.
Understand. That's not our concern. Our concern is that, once the door is cracked open and we've got the ability to continue what we're doing right now, but now we can do these other things, too. It becomes attractive, like Jim said, to another buyer where they may want to go, look, hey, there's this piece of property over here and a great part of town right next to the interstate, and we want to do this with that piece of property. And now the door's been opened because now we've got a drive-up window available for conditional use and some other things. So that's our concern, is that, I understand, and I'm a completely pro-business guy, I understand what, what is trying to happen as a small business, and I encourage that. I just don't want to encourage it where long-term planning already has this supposed to be designated as a residential area.
So, Mr. Winborn, I guess if, if we could, if I could just restate what you're, what you said, just to make sure I'm clear. So you're okay with it becoming a future subdivision or anything that's residential, and you're okay with the existing structure that's there? You're not okay with it moving into possibly something that could create something bigger than what's there today?
I'm good with it.
So you're good with today?
I think that's a fair statement.
Okay.
That building that's on there is pretty big, isn't it?
Actually, it's not that big, and it sits pretty far back off of the street. And it's, we're going to have enough, we're going to have a traffic increase anyway. Well, it's bad enough now since we don't have a roundabout at Erby, right? That will help alleviate. But what happens now is that that area becomes a roundabout, because people can't turn left, they go right and go there, and then they do it down here instead. So, but it's not that big of a building right now.
Now, the existence, what's there now? They renewed the lease, or if Computer Works comes in, potentially being roughly the same thing, that's still not a problem. What's your problem is in the future, whenever Computer Works, whoever, if they were to tab, were to sell?
You've got all these, all these other conditional uses that can be applied to that property.
That's your main 100% concern right there.
And that's, that's the crack in the door where somebody says, it's a valuable piece of property, because the way it's written, we could do this now. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Dave Tucson, and I live at 2950 Craighead Circle. And I kind of, in concurrence with Jay and the previous gentleman, my wife and I, we moved there two years ago, and to be honest with you, I didn't even think there was anything active going on at that business, because there's really no activity happening where it's at, and that, you know, with A&amp;T now. But I mean, you open the door to rezoning and, and offering Computer Works the opportunity to move in. I mean, there's a total difference between if it was a subdivision and people that have interest in homes and that, the way they're going to drive coming in and out of a subdivision, than it is people coming to a business to pay bills and that. We'll have people coming in from all, you know, all across Faulkner County. I think that would definitely be a big problem. Just in the two years that we've lived there, my gosh, the traffic on that road now with the turnabouts, the turnarounds, it is crazy. I mean, you can get on, off of Tyler, turn on Salem to go to Kroger, and you're stopped 10 feet off of Tyler in the evenings. So I mean, you put a business there, a full active business, it's, it's just going to be crazy. I'm just totally against it. I don't think it'd be good for my property value, and I just think it would potentially downwind if it, if Computer Works didn't like the location, wasn't working good for them, or in this day and age with business, I mean, somebody comes and offers you a big chunk of money, of course, you know, you can think about it, move on, and then what, what pops in then, you know? And, you know, I've paid good money for my house, and I sure don't want to, to affect me when I'm ready to sell, so, you know? That's pretty much my thoughts on it, but anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Brian, I have a quick question for you. What's the worst-case scenario on an RU1? No, I was talking to Brian.
Thank you.
I was going to ask that.
What, what's worst-case scenario in RU1? What's the worst thing that can go on there in an RU1?
RU1 basically allows office by right. I mean, if you resented RU1, there's lots of things you can do through conditional use permit, which they have to come back before you and the planning, or the city council to, to get that conditional use approved. But for the most part, RU1 allows, I think, school, maybe. I'd have to go through all the laundry list, but office, for the most part, is what you get with RU1 by right.
Quiet office, kind of?
What's that?
Quiet office?
Just office in general. I mean, it could be Axion, or somebody wanted to build a building there, they could do it, but it, it would basically be allowed office uses without getting conditional use permits. Even light manufacturing, I looked that up a second ago, just to make sure. RU1 years ago started out as an I-2 industrial zone, and it was mutated into this restricted-use zone. So even light manufacturing is not allowed there without a conditional use permit. You still, basically, it's pretty much limited to office, for the most part, with that by-right office use, RU1.
So Brian, would there be, say, if we gave this an RU1, and TC Works went in there, what if they wanted to divide up their property, sell it to another business? Would that be something that would come back before the planning commission?
Only if it was a conditional use permit, and you made it tied to the applicant, because a zoning is a zoning. It, it gets applied to the property, and it doesn't matter. You could subdivide the property however you like, but zoning allows them to walk away from it, some other person to walk in and do the same type of business that's going on there now. I mean, it's a grandfathered use, as long as it keeps going, and it doesn't lapse for one year's time. That can continue to be used in that fashion as a service yard by AT&amp;T, or say, Center Point, or somebody else wanted to use that, as long as it doesn't lapse in one year, you can continue to use that as a service yard. But if you zoned it to RU1, that use could more or less still continue, but really probably needs conditional use to allow that to continue. But RU1 would allow that office use, basically, for the most part, is about all you could do there.
And anything else requires a conditional use?
I'd have to go through the whole list to give you an extensive list, but that's pretty much what it comes down to.
So as long as the, so if the property, the one thing I wanted to ask about the grandfathered situation, does that transfer if they sell the property? So it's grandfathered in now? If they were to sell the property to somebody else, does it still stay, does the use still stay grandfathered?
Yes.
The use, but not the conditional use?
Right, yeah, yeah. No, I got that. I got that. Yeah, the zoning will stay. That's what I asked. That's what I wanted, no.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian.
My name is Chuck Davidson, and I live at 1930 Royal Drive, directly across the street from the property in question. And I just want to make one real quick point. Mr. Brown, you made a, a good point about asking if, if that land was converted to a subdivision, would there not be increased traffic? I'm sure there would be. My point is, though, once it's a subdivision, it's always a subdivision. Once you rezone it and it becomes commercial, then, you know, I agree with everybody else. I'm not necessarily against, you know, Computer Works having a store there, but there's no question in my mind, because of the proximity to the new exit, that property value from a commercial standpoint is going to skyrocket to the point where there's a, I mean, who wouldn't sell their land if they had a chance to double their money? I mean, everybody's going to do that. So we have no idea what it's going to become in five years or 10 years. Or maybe in 2020, if AT&amp;T decides they're going to do cutbacks and they don't need that service center anymore. So yes, residential does increase traffic and does pose their own set of problems. But once it's a residential center, a residential area, it's always going to be a subdivision. So you know, that's a, that's a known. With a rezoning, you have no idea what's going to be there five years, 10 years from now. And so that's what we're concerned with, and that's what I'm concerned with, with property values and things like that, so.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone. My name's John Skinner. I live at 2870 Somerset, and I'm also a city employee. I'm all for the growth of the city, business, everything. Don't get me wrong, I'm all for it. But if you know where the address of Somerset is, my backyard is this property. I reach over my fence, I'm in this property. My issue, of course, the property values and everything, I'm with you because I'm right there, what happens behind me is going to involve what happens on my property as far as value of it, if we were to sell, or if we stay there, just the overall property value as it grows. But my issue basically is security issue. I've got a child that's in elementary school, and with my back fence being the border of that property, currently, right now, with AT&amp;T, they have a chain link with barbed wire. So the only ones coming in and out behind my house are employees of that company. They, no one else can get in there, essentially. If you open it up and allow drive-throughs to go through and everything, parking, any other businesses comes in, basically what they have is a, a one-by-piece of wood between them and my property. With my child playing in the backyard, it concerns me a little, because I don't know what's going to be going on back there, traffic back there, everything, so that's my concern, is a security issue.
Fair request.
How is, how's everything back there now?
It's not bad. I mean, of course, I think someone mentioned the eyesore. Of course, you've got a big industrial building, you've got huge trucks back there. They're in and out occasionally. Sometimes it's at night, sometimes weekends, I get called out. So there's some traffic in and out. You hear their, their, their beepers when they back up. As far as them just hanging out talking, I don't hear them discussing things, yelling, screaming, they don't do that. They park their trucks, they do their thing, they move on. So it's not really a bother, and we're basically used to that. But I like that no one can just, and they, they do turn around. There's a pretty big area in front of that fence that, there's an 18-wheeler that parks there. I think he lives somewhere near that area. But there are people that turn around there, and it throws dust up. It's, it's, it's a dirt lot. So, and I know they might pave it if you've got a new business and stuff, that's one thing. But still, you've got access to behind all of our houses that live on Somerset, and it's a significant way back. It's, it's 800 feet, I think I saw the dimensions of it. So that's, I think I figured about five yards, five, six, almost six or seven backyards that would be facing this property. So if you've got just open traffic, people driving through, parking, if you've been to any Mercantile area, you've seen, people will just park, or they'll park and, and leave, and, and you can police that and see who's supposed to be parking out there, but it's, it's public at that point. Anyone can come in and out, they can drive through, they can park, depending on how they do the lot, park next to my fence. So now I've got people maybe talking, doing whatever, right over my fence, so that, that's my concern.
Fair concern.
Anyone have any questions on that?
Thank you.
My name's Robert Roth. Live at 3140 Baxter Drive in Conway. Was there a environmental impact study done to support this rezoning? And the reason I ask that is, is Royal Oaks subdivision has a problem with flooding. And anytime you change any of that, the terrain around that area, you're going to affect the flow of water that goes right through Royal Oaks, Crooked Creek, the whole neighborhood. The city was smart enough to build a, a retention pond to help slow that flow of water off the ridge that's north of us. Now, if you, it may not sound like much, but if you change 4.2 acres where the water is going to run off, and it's going to go through our neighborhood, not only have you caused a floodplain, you're decreasing the value of the property, and I echo everything that's been said by the previous speakers. My concern is property value. The, by the way, was there an environmental study done?
No, there was not an environmental study done. However, I can tell you that anytime that there is a building permit request to the city, the city engineer ensures that any, any building that goes up or any addition that happens to the facility, that no additional water that doesn't currently flow off the property, does not flow off the property as a result of this new addition, this new building, this new permit, et cetera.
Problem now is gravel and, and dirt.
Correct.
You pave it, what are you going to do? And so the engineer said, no, it won't affect Royal Oaks.
There is not a current request, as far as I am aware, of any changes to the facilities as it stands today. So the city engineer has not likely even looked at any potential changes, because there are no potential changes that have been proposed.
Well, they're going to put buildings there, correct? And drive-throughs? And parking lots and pavement?
We don't have anything in this manual tonight that suggests they're going to alter their property.
Correct.
Well, you know they are. I mean, I mean, it's, it's obvious that they're going to alter the property.
But at that time that they do have to, there are several layers of checks and balances in between that and them actually starting work.
Okay.
Portions of that.
From ignorance, but.
No, no worries. Portions of that does require that the city engineer review any drainage issues, any water rerouting as a result of any changes to the property.
But I'd like to bring up to you now that there is a small section in Crooked Creek that is a, a flood zone. It's not very large. And here recently, in the last 18 months, when we had that 500-year flood, we had homes flooded, brick walls pushed over by the water. That's, that's a concern. That affects property value back there. Well, thank you for listening to me. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, thank you. Hey, thank you.
Anybody else to speak in opposition?
We have everybody stand that doesn't want to talk, but to show that support for this.
So I will state for the record, we did, I counted just a second ago, we did receive 23 specific emails in regards to this request that's in front of us, all of which were in opposition to the change.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Pierce, and I live at 2880 Somerset Drive, which is Steeple's Chase, so we're John's neighbors. And again, I think I agree with everybody that spoke before me. For me, it is security. We have double, our back gate opens up, we actually, you know, go in and out of the back to, with fishing boat. So, you know, for us, it's kind of like, okay, this would really impact our quality of life. We have people that walk throughout our neighborhood who go out on Salem Road, which you kind of take your life in your hands because of the traffic. And the fact is, is that I think, you know, as everybody has stated, we're just going to get increased volume of traffic. I can't imagine having a drive-through where people are coming and going, and you're trying to walk over that bridge over the railroad tracks, which people do it, but it's, can't imagine having, you know, retail. It would just destroy our quality of life, the walkability of that area, so for me, that's important. Security is important, as well as the property values, yeah. We've got equity in our house, and we don't want to lose that equity. We have, you know, retirement dreams in the future, so, you know, those are just three areas that, you know, I want to say I agree with, I would please don't rezone, you know, I don't want it rezoned, keep it as it is. AT&amp;T's not that bad, how it is right now, we can live with. So I just appreciate your time and thanks for listening.
Thank you.
You have a, you said you had a double thing, so you use their driveway to back your fishing boat into your backyard?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
We're just right there.
Yeah, I'm guessing that this is Somerset, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. My name is Lisa Winborn, I live at 2950 Franklin Circle, and I have a question. It is approximately four acres, correct?
4.24.
I'm sorry?
4.24.
Okay, so how big is Computer Works going to be?
It'll be 4.24 acres.
It will only be Computer Works, they can't subdivide it and let someone else come in?
So the request in front of us today is to rezone this entire 4.24 acres from A1 Agriculture to RU1.
But is that facility going to be 4.2 acres big?
The request in front of us today is specifically around the 4.24 acres, moving it from A1 Agriculture to RU1.
But what's just.
So we would be rezoning the entire 4.24 acres.
Okay, so what's to stop them from selling off and three other businesses coming in there?
We don't have any control over that.
Correct.
Well, that's why we're against it.
Yeah, I understand that, but we can only look at the zoning today.
Yeah, but y'all need to see our perspective as homeowners, and you're bringing in businesses down the road that's going to affect us. It's not as much the traffic as it's the business, and the people that are coming in. And looking at your backyard and seeing a parking lot. So, I mean, there's more than just the traffic.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question, if you don't mind?
Please step up to the microphone, we are recording it, so any question has to come through the microphone.
This is Dave Tucson again at 2950 Craighead Circle. When, when the city comes up with this plan in this meeting to rezone and stuff like that, is the normal practice, do they mail notices out to people in the newer neighborhoods that, so they'd have some idea what's going on with it?
Yes.
Because I was under the impression that some flyers went out in the mail, and some of the people got some stuff in the mail, but it makes me kind of suspect that I talked to a lot of people that hadn't gotten it, so.
Any requests that comes before this commission, there are public hearing notices and public hearing signs and notifications to the adjacent properties that have to go out.
Is there any special reason why they wouldn't have?
No, so there is specific radius around who must be notified, and they have to be certified, so all of that has been taken care of.
Okay, because I only know maybe one or two people that got a notice, and, I mean, I'm not very far from it, so. I was just curious, because I find that kind of suspect, that, you know, most of, you know, to me, the whole group of neighborhood in that area should have been notified to, you know, enhance their ability to express their opinion about it as well, so. I appreciate it, that's all.
Thank you.
My name's Randall Erwin, I live at 2835 Somerset Drive. And no one has mentioned that, there's quite a bit of woods back there. You say there's 4-point something acres?
Yes.
There's a lot of woods back there, okay? The gentleman mentioned runoff and that type of thing. This is natural, natural watershed, and absorbs water. You put a bunch of concrete on the thing, it's going to impact the environment. Don't know how much, but there is noise that comes from that from time to time, and some of it's quite loud. And I would predict that, but it's not continuous, and it's not all the time. And you start adding a new business, like everybody else says, they're going to grow this business, it's going to impact the area negatively. Period.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Benny Morris, I live at 2820 Somerset Drive. And I totally agree with what all the other neighbors have said, but I've lived there for 26 and a half years. I live alone, and I'm worried, and I'm retired now. I worry about the security issues, I worry about what Randall said, that is woods. On the other side of my fence, it's woods. There's just a small part taken up with AT&amp;T's facility, and it does not, they don't bother me, like someone said, we're used to it. And they really don't do that much there. It's actually more of a storage facility for their big spools of cable and some of their equipment. But directly behind my house, it's all woods, and it goes way on up. The majority of that piece of that 4-point-whatever acres is a wooded area. So what's going to happen if someone goes in there and cuts all that down in trees? I'm worried about flood issues, I'm worried about security. That's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Seeing there's no one else, I'll call this back into commission. Guys, I'll remind you that this is just to rezone the property, A1 to RU1 at 2010 Salem Road. We are not talking about the conditional use permit yet. What say you commissioners?
Okay, I'm confused, who owns this property? Does AT&amp;T own it?
The realtors here representing the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the McLearys.
So AT&amp;T may come in and renew their lease?
Correct.
They've had the lease, he said, since like the early, early 80s, and they've been there since the 70s, but, and so.
1977.
Talking the wills is required every now and then.
2020.
2020, okay.
That's my question.
They, they really haven't, this just, to me, this just seems like a, first of all, this proper, this current lease is really out of zoning, right? With our current zoning laws, the grandfather is out of current zoning structure. So this just seems, A, seems like them trying to get in the current zoning requirements, but also a way to protect themselves if AT&amp;T doesn't renew, right? So they're at the mercy of AT&amp;T in the current structure of their agreement. So if 2020 rolls around and AT&amp;T renews, then they're just going to go on status quo. If AT&amp;T decides not to renew, then they apparently have a similar type backup plan in Computer Works allegedly lined up now.
Would have thought it would have been the owners that would have been requesting that.
He apparently sent Mitch to.
On behalf of the realtor.
On proxy for them.
Wouldn't it be, if we're doing this now, before we even know what's really going on, if it's even going to be renewed or not, is this something that, it seems like it's kind of early? Is it something that, we don't even know what their building plan is, I mean, we don't, you know, that's down, that's not really on us, but with the, whether or not they renewed that lease by, what, is it 2020?
I think they just want to be prepared in case.
So even if you think outside of will AT&amp;T renew this lease or not, because we don't know what we don't know.
Right.
We just completely do not know what we don't know. The request is, is it appropriate for the land use to be RU1 in this location?
They said it does, so we're just.
It's already been that way for 20 years.
The thing is, if we don't even do anything today, and they sell this, because Computer Works is doing the exact same thing as AT&amp;T, they have every right to do the exact same thing AT&amp;T is doing right now.
Nothing.
No, those conditions.
And let, no.
No.
Correct.
You have a retail facility.
We're in commission, sir.
As long as they.
We're in commission, I'm sorry, folks, we're in commission.
Excuse us, folks. As long as they continue the same work that they are currently producing now, don't add to the building, don't make any changes.
And move whoever they want to in there.
They can still do what they're doing now.
Correct.
So basically, what they're doing now, what does that fit in? That's what we're, the question we're asked. And right now, this is the way it fits into our current model.
Right.
So I don't have a problem with that. Now, I think there needs to be some further discussion when we go on to the next thing, which is the conditional use.
Yep.
So I make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Question, before we get to a vote. Brian, specifically to you, since this, if we approve this to be RU1, does that negate the grandfathered portion? Meaning, and the reason why I'm asking this, if we approve it today, are there any other requirements that are under RU1 that this facility would have to bring up to code under the RU1 zoning that they are currently not compliant in for RU1?
Got a question. Thank you.
I think the answer is, it's a little gray, but I think the answer is no. That the zoning would not change the grandfathered use. The zoning changes, but they can continue to do what AT&amp;T is doing there, there's a service yard. It puts it closer to compliance in the fact that it allows office, for the most part. There's another part, if you look at the conditional use, that's upcoming here. Contractor facility is one of those things that's being asked for as a conditional use. I think that's the category that really solidifies what they're doing, not just as a grandfathered status, that would bring it into a conforming status if you were to grant that contractor facility to go with the RU1. So, but I think, yes, if the zoning changed, I think they could, as long as they don't have a lapse in one year's time, they can continue what they're doing there now. If that makes sense?
Well, it does to me, but.
Are there any, and I appreciate that answer, and that does answer one of the questions. The second question, I guess, would be, is, if this was a blank slate, this, they quit working there for a year, and another applicant wanted to come in here and do RU1, is any piece of this parcel out of compliance with the standards of RU1? Meaning, is it required that they have a paved parking lot? Are there any other security fences, lighting, signage, all of those requirements that is currently out of compliance with?
Well, just, if you change the zoning and the grandfathered use continues.
Yeah.
We're not going to require them to go out there and instantly pave their parking lot or change anything to the building. That would have to take place as part of development review. If you add on 2,000 square feet or 20% more of the building, whichever is less, then that kicks in a whole range of standards, which includes the city engineer's review for drainage, and you might have to do some onsite detention if there's water, like you say, coming off more than is coming off of it now, all that is studied. And that has to be accounted for. But you rezone it, they continue to use it like they're doing, as long as they're not changing the building or adding any more additional parking that's there, or those things that don't, you know, if it's not triggering development review, then we're not going to make them upgrade anything at this time.
Perfect. Thank you.
Well, so if they, if we do change it today, they're under contract to 2020, let's say they do an early buyout, they move someone else in, then they have pretty much effectively what they're asking for today with the other requests.
That would be the same, we look at it the same way. If Computer Works, someone went in there and started using that same building, same configuration, as long as they're not doing that thing that triggers a development review, adding on some addition, additional paved giant parking lot, I mean, something that would trigger development review, then they could just keep on using that building as is, basically as it is now.
But could they, if they don't change the configuration of the building, could they move into a model that is service and sales, or service and retail?
Like a strip mall.
Retail, no, I mean, retail's not allowed unless you allow that through a conditional use permit. RU1 strictly allows office. I went through the list a minute ago just to kind of see some of the things that were allowed. Office, office uses, like a doctor's office, that's one that can be used there. Commercial or public utility vehicles is kind of an odd one. Animal clinic, post office, school, that's pretty much about what you got that's allowed under RU1 by right.
Anything other than that's going to have to come back before Brian and then us.
Well, I guess what I'm asking, so say if they don't change the existing structure, but they change, you know, over to a different owner or a different business franchise, can that business come in and, without making any structural changes, can they operate differently?
Only those things that he just said.
Only those things that are allowed by right, or those grandfathered uses that are continuing right now, they couldn't.
So the grandfather uses would continue regardless to, if they do an early buy of the contract?
RU1 would not allow somebody to go in there with a 14,000-square-foot building and start a best buy.
Change it over.
You know, that's not going to happen, you can't, that's not allowed in RU1 office. You can go in there and open up a 14,000-square-foot office if you like.
But you would continue on.
But they would still have to come before.
Not for the office use. But, but that structure doesn't exist, and so in order to start an office there, you'd have to go in and materially change the structure, which would trigger development review, which would trigger. Very likely that would trigger development review, if you went into that building and needed to upgrade it and add on and get building permits and parking, and so there's a real good chance that if you use that existing building to say, make it a 14,000-square-foot office, it's likely it's going to hit development review, and then we'll get involved in all the upgrades, but.
But if it's RU1, they can do that, they can subdivide the land, it could become four office buildings.
Sure. I mean, you could subdivide the land today and make it one acre tracks. A1, you have to have at least one acre, so you could divide it up into four different tracks, potentially, if you wanted to.
Agriculture, yeah. Four AT&amp;T.
But you couldn't use it, I mean, you couldn't, couldn't add on to the building or whatever is there. It's grandfathered, the building itself, the size of it, the configuration, the use that it's doing, is what you got, basically, it's grandfathered. Yeah, they could come back tomorrow and say, hey, we want to keep AT&amp;T and divide these other two acres and put duplexes on them. I mean, they could subdivide that land to however they want it to today. Well, they could put single-family homes on, as long as it's one acre. Well, you know what I mean, I mean, they could ask for whatever zoning they want. And the trees are not protected either, I mean, I hate to say that, but.
You can go cut down those trees tomorrow.
Trees can be cut down, like George Covington cut down a lot of those on the north property just above it that he owns. I mean, that's the way it is. The other fact I'd lay out is that if AT&amp;T wanted to add on, they say, oh, we've got 18 trucks, we need to start more service, we need to put on another bay to this building that's there, it's not big enough, they would have to go through this exercise we're doing right now. They would, if they came to me and asked, how can we add on to our building, I'd say, well, probably the best zone for that is RU1, and also get a conditional use permit for a contractor facility. That is, if you wanted to add on and continue the use that's there, but as long as they work within the framework of what's there, the size of the building, existing configuration, it can keep on going unless it lapses for one year. Does all that make sense?
Yes. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
So anything that's going to be changed, it would have to come back through us, it was of their concern.
The way the, the way the current property is structured, basically, anything else they want to do with it besides store trucks on it, is going to trigger something else.
Can I ask one more question, because I just want to get some clarification?
No, no, sir. We're in commission.
Commission, we're closed.
No.
We're closed.
Having said that.
We shut down.
You can't.
Having said that, you can stay the way it is and do exactly the same thing.
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
So, either way, so we can either change it and make it congruent to the policies and of the city, or we can leave it like it is. Either way, it's going to be the same way.
Either way, AT&amp;T or Computer Works use it exactly the way it's being used now, no matter what we do.
Correct. That's right.
The only way we can control anything that goes on on that property is by making restrictions on it, which is what this is for.
That's right. Brian's right. The second part of this.
But this, this piece that we're dealing with now, we can't get to the second piece if we don't address this piece.
Well, it's not a farm.
No.
A1 does not fit. So we need to do something.
So Brian has made the motion and Anna seconded. All right, is there any more discussion? There is a motion on the floor, has been seconded. If there's no other discussion, I'll ask for a vote. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
All right, so the second piece of this that still has to be addressed is the request for conditional use of this RU1 at 2010 Salem Road. And so, the conditional use permit here is for contracted facilities other than office and to basically use it like it is today. We don't...
It had sales. It didn't have sales there today.
Correct. Yeah, so the requested office, the requested conditional use, which is we can choose to grant, are office equipment sales, retail restricted utility, or retail restricted utility facility, warehousing, and drive-through payment window. Those are all things that we can control now. Likewise, we'll open this back up to discussion briefly, because I don't know that we're going to be able to come up with any new conjecture, but I'll open the floor back up in case there is. So if there's anybody that has something new to add, then we'll open the floor back up for anybody to speak in favor of the conditional use. Mitch?
How much time, Jerry?
No, thank you. I'm Mitch Hart, I live at 1401 Hogan Lane. We simply went through the exercise of going through the book, you know, we looked around to see what was there first, and what they doing now. And then we went through the book again to see how we could cover what they're doing, basically. So, you know, and I'll leave it up to, oh, there's some interpretation involved in the zoning book, right, about use. So they were doing warehousing, you know, they're doing contracting, they're doing, they're already doing those activities, so how, and we reviewed, reviewed those with Brian, you know, hopefully we're on point with those, right? So anyway, so that, that got us where we were, okay? Then on top of that, the conditional uses that would be needed in order to do a Computer Works, you know, with their businesses, we added those to the, to what was already happening there, right? Which obviously included restricted retail. If you go through, I don't know, if you go through the book and read, oh, we're trying to, they sell computers, right? They do computer repair. So we couldn't, oh, I don't know, it didn't seem like RU1 allowed for computer sales. And they sell computer software and repair. So we went through the book and looked for computer sales, and it's not listed. All right, so this, it wasn't listed at all, you know, we knew it's, it's a sales, it's a retail, right? It's a retail to do, to sell computers and computer parts and software. So then our next exercise was, let's find the most restrictive retail use that would, that, that covers computer sales, since it's not in the book, okay? We couldn't find computers in this book anywhere. So then we got to, you know, retail general, and we got a list of what you can do in general retail. You know, the other list was retail high impact, and we have a whole list here of everything you can do in high-impact retail, which obviously, a lot of those are going to be objections from neighbors, and I understand it, right? You don't want high retail, you don't want general. So we went for the most restrictive retail, which was, that we could find, in order to allow them to sell computers, okay? So as this reads, it's an enclosed facility or group of facilities providing the sale of retail products or personal service enterprises. These facilities are typically designed to serve surrounding residential neighborhoods. Uses include, we're not limited to, you know, neighborhood commercial stuff that are congruent with, with residential neighborhoods. Oh, you can, I have the list here, if you want to read it. But, so we went for the most restricted, correct? So, because, and I understand the neighbor's concerns when it comes to retail. Right? So, so that's what, the reason we requested that, because that's the business that they're in. Oh, the second thing with the drive-through window payment, I don't know how many people use that service, it's a nice convenience for people that need it, but I don't use that service. You know, you have a thousand ways you can pay people now. And their business, I think it's great that businesses reach out and provide services for people, that doesn't mean people are going to use it, you know? I don't, I very seldom, I think I've done it one time, driven through Conway Corp and paid my bill. But that, that was the reason for the drive-through, was for that payment service that they want to offer to their clients as Computer Works. And I, like I said, I don't know if y'all use that service or not, but I wouldn't expect to see a lot of traffic being generated by that. Anyway, that being said, we just tried to match up in the, with these conditional uses, basically what was happening and the two that we needed for, you know, what they needed to do to run their business. And we're, you know, I'll, I'll talk about some of these, some of these, you know, warehousing, they store material and stuff, they're general contracting, they've got all kinds of heavy equipment that they use. I wanted to be, I wanted to be inclusive, I didn't, you know, I didn't want to, and there's some interpretation involved in, in these items, right?
Yeah.
Oh, but anyway, y'all don't probably like seeing me that much, so I didn't want to have to come back. But anyway, that was my intent. Now, if, if y'all see this thing differently, let me know.
Do you have any immediate plans to alter the current facilities?
Nope.
If we were to put conditions on the conditional use permit, such as hours of operations, how would that impact the business that is currently there today? For instance, if I grant conditional use permit for this facility, and I state hours of operation between eight and five, I've used that once, let's continue to use it, and AT&amp;T trucks have to do work on a Saturday...
Right.
That's outside of the eight to five business hours. How would that impact your business today? Or their business today?
Well, of course, I can't speak, of course, I don't spend any time over there, but I know they have emergency stuff all the time, that, you know, anytime that someone cuts a fiber optic line in this area, those guys got to show up, you know, and I'm glad they do. So I don't know, honestly, I can't answer that because I don't know their hours, maybe that's a better way of saying it. But I know that they probably come and go, or are required to be available 24 hours a day. I don't think they have to, though, by the way, we, you know, I don't think that they work a lot of weekends, I don't think, but I don't know, so I'm not going to say. I know that they have to be available whenever, you know, someone cuts a fiber optic line, they got to be available to fix it.
And you said that you didn't have any plans to alter the building, but it doesn't currently have a drive-through, so...
No, no. Yes, if Computer Works takes over and they want to put a drive-through for, for customer payments of their internet bills...
So you would be altering it.
They would have to alter it at that point, that is correct. No, as it exists today, we have no plans to alter it. AT&amp;T's there, and we, we expect AT&amp;T to be there.
So, part of the conditional use permit process requires us to take the adjoining neighbor's best interests in mind, and make sure that the use of the facility is not only appropriate for the, the parcel of land, but also keeps in mind the concerns that we've heard today. Security, extra noise, extra traffic, flooding, the whole host of issues that have come before us. And essentially, you're coming before us and saying, possibly, maybe sometime down the road, I might want to change something, but I can't present you a plan. Is that what I'm understanding?
I think that's fair, that, given the fact that AT&amp;T is still leasing the building, right? I can't say that, I can't make, make a concrete statement that Computer Works is ever going to be there.
Okay. So would it also be a fair statement to say, since we have approved RU1, and if the Computer Works decided to take over the facility and do the exact same thing that AT&amp;T is currently using the facility for today, that that suffice, or that sufficiently meets the request without providing us any additional information for us to make any suggested conditions along the conditional use permit?
I think that's possible, given the, oh, I don't know, the warehousing and contractors, and there's a couple of them in there that probably apply to the existing one. I'll let you read them and, and make your best decision. I don't think they would have any problem at all if y'all allow restricted retail, I don't think they have a problem at all, you know, providing hours for the restricted retail. I think that would be a fair request. Oh, what hours y'all normally open for your, for your computer sales and services? That's an eight to five, or, can y'all put a conditional use on that?
But you understand that if I put an eight to five conditional use on it today, that restricts AT&amp;T's current use of the facility?
You can't just do that for restricted retail? Oh, I thought maybe you could.
Absolutely not.
My, I'm just, I don't know the rules.
Yep.
Brian, sorry about that.
You could, make it limited to restricted retail if you wanted to, or...
AT&amp;T is grandfathered down, just AT&amp;T, Computer Works.
Oh, I thought maybe you could, you know, under conditional, or under restricted retail specifically, I thought maybe you could put a conditional use on hours for that particular use. I don't know if you can or not, is that...
We can do all kinds of things.
Right. Right, right. Well, is that a fair request to do restricted retail with conditional, with hours given? Because they don't...
Retail is restricted from eight to five.
So, one of, one of the, as, as Jerry stated to me over here to the side, one of the conditional, or one of the suggested conditions that we typically put on a conditional use permit is that the conditional use permit is only granted to the current occupant of the building. So if we did so, we would say, only applies to the AT&amp;T business that is currently operating there. So if you decide, the Computer Works decided to come in and take over that business, they would still have to come back before us again and do this exact same process that you're going through today.
And hopefully with the...
And at that time, then we could do additional conditions on it, such as hours of operation, drive-through, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Of course, at that point, they've already invested, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars into the building, you know, not knowing whether they can, not knowing whether they can run their business or not, which, you know, that's a huge risk on their part.
So, so if the lease, if AT&amp;T is not leasing, is leased the building through 2020, and we just grant the conditional use permit to AT&amp;T until that time, when you find out whether they're going to lease it or not?
Right.
But AT&amp;T's not requesting?
I get it, but if, that's what I'm saying, so, or we deny the conditional use and they just continue the lease. If, if the lease decides that it's not going to be renewed, then he can come back with the conditional use and say...
That's what I'm saying. Why are we even talking about their rights?
That's my point.
That's a good, good point, but I wanted to find out, so you said by that time they would have already...
Yes, they will, yeah, they will have closed on the building, you know, in the next 30 to 60 days.
Okay, so there is a plan in place?
There, well, in 30, 60 days, they will, yeah, they'll go ahead and purchase the building, and they'll go ahead and get...
Computer Works buying it?
Do what?
Computer Works buying it?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, they're purchasing this building.
And then we'll uphold the lease to AT&amp;T, essentially.
I see. Okay.
You know, all these buildings aren't cheap, right? So if they came back here in a year and y'all said no, then, you know, they're, AT&amp;T's left, so they're kind of in a spot, right? Oh, that's the reason we, we wanted to address it now.
Okay, well, it's a lot clearer to me now.
Sorry about that, I apologize.
I may not have heard right from the...
And that's the only reason we're asking, right? That's the reason we're asking now, today, so we can get a feel for if they can run their business out of this location, before they buy it.
I don't have any additional questions.
Me neither.
Thank you, sir.
No, thank you. Thank you again.
Anybody else to speak in favor of this? Anybody to speak in opposition of the conditional use?
I would like to ask something.
Yes, sir.
This goes back to the question I was going to ask before.
Yes, sir.
If, and R, Dave Tucson, 2950 Craighead Circle, if R21, I kind of understood the gentleman next to me over here was, really wasn't established for retail, if that was the case, it doesn't make much sense to me why we even voted on A1 to R21 if AT&amp;T's remaining in the building and they're going to do the same type of operation. It's kind of obvious to me now, just listening to everything going on, it's, we're geared to go towards retail, and I'm not sure how many of you guys would want a retail facility within 100, 200 yards of your home. I mean, I just...
Well, the RU1 isn't...
Not retail.
It's restricted retail.
It's not retail, but then when they do, but it's, when you do your conditions...
But we haven't, we haven't approved a conditional use yet. They're asking...
Right, but I mean, I can read, I can read, I could read through all that smoke and see where we headed. I mean, I did investigations for the federal government for 31 years, I can see exactly where this thing's headed. I mean, it's blatantly obvious to me. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. And I hope y'all think harder about the conditions than you did changing the, you know, the zoning, because it's obvious where we headed.
Thank you, sir.
Jim Athenee, again, 1940 Royal Drive. I kind of got the flavor of the conversation a while ago from listening to you. One of your big concerns was you wanted to bring that area into compliance with code. That was the reason to take it over. But what I heard too, was a lot of you, which I really appreciate, had concerns about what, what are the structural changes going to be, what are the changes going to be there? And what I heard was a lot of you saying, okay, if business is going to stay the same as it is right now, well, I think most of us be fine if it stays the way it is right now. It's the chains we're discussing right now which opens up the whole can of worms that really concerns us. And we really think this is going to have a strong negative effect on our property when this becomes retail. And I'll close with this. I have never known of a business, especially a computer retail sales business, that wanted to have low traffic. That flies in the face of business. Leave it with you on that one, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Sales part is going to be more of just selling services. That's why they had each a sales partner, right?
They're going to, Brooks, they're going to have some things to sell in there.
Hi, my name's Shannon Shumun. Can I speak now, is it all right?
Sure, yes.
I'm, I've been a neighbor, I've been...
Your address, please.
1950 Royal Drive. I do owe everything that everybody has said here tonight. I'd also like to remind everybody of what Mr. Wilson and, and Mr. Wilson, we want your business to be successful. We want more businesses in Conway. He's not listening, that's all right. But he stood here and told all of us that he is, he wants his business to grow. It's going to get bigger. It's going to be in our yards. You're talking about three neighborhoods, you're talking about a lot of Conway. I understand that they were grandfathered in, but they were grandfathered in under agricultural, not computer technology advancement. Technology doesn't stand still. It's here today, tomorrow it is down the road. And it's going to grow, it's going to get bigger. It's in our backyards, it's in our front yards. Conway grandfathered it in, but Conway has grown, and we need to protect our city. We need to protect our families, we need to protect, we need to protect our city, what it looks like. We're relying on all of you. I do have a question for you. It was explained to me that possibly you guys are going to put together a report or a recommendation to the city council. So this is not the final decision, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And are you employees of the city, or are you volunteers?
We're volunteers, ma'am.
So you all have jobs?
Yes.
You all have homes here in this city?
Yep.
And I doubt you'd want this in your backyard. I know you wouldn't. So please, take this under consideration. I'd like you to go back and re-vote on the first thing. Thank you.
John Skinner, 2870 Somerset. I agree with all the discussion like we've had. I know that we've, you guys have expressed your opinion on the rezoning itself. We were against that, obviously, because the way we see it is if AT&amp;T left, the lease is gone. No one else can do what they're doing because they were grandfathered in, which the property, I guess, after hearing y'all talk, the building and all that stays grandfathered, so anyone can do that. So I think we've gotten used to what's there, so we are okay with that. You grow that into anything else, now it is becoming something else. You are opening up. And it sounds like the plan to get it rezoned, because otherwise you don't have to do anything right now. The zone, A1, great. AT&amp;T does what they want. Stay there till the end of time if they want, because they're grandfathered in. So the whole purpose of the rezoning looks like for that future plan of the retail and whatever else ends up being there. So I think we see that pretty clearly. So I think that's why we don't really understand why we needed to rezone in the first place if, if there's not a major plan of that retail hitting our neighborhoods, whether it be, I mean, we, we put a lot, like we talked about the investment going into this property, we understand that. As homeowners, we absolutely understand that, because we've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into our properties too, and we're already in them. So that's kind of our concern, so, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, seeing nobody else, I'll...
I have one last thing. Another question. Sorry. So on your website right now, I'm sorry, Shannon Shumun, 1950 Royal Drive, on your website right now, it says Planning Commission Staff Report, July 2018. And down here in this section, it says, "Projected Traffic Impact." And you go down here and it says, "If the maximum sized allowed strip retail center of 7,000, or 74,000 square foot was constructed..." They're already talking about constructing it, guys. Have we not read this?
That, that is, and Brian can, can specify, because he, him and his staff are the ones that write that comment. His responsibility for this commission is to give us the best and worst-case possibilities that are allowed within the usage that is currently coming before us. So he is trying to paint us the broadest picture possible so we can understand the full impact. That means in worst-case scenario, if we were to approve a wide swath of things, that would be the impact to the neighborhood. That is not to say that the Computer Works has suggested to us that they want to come in and build a 74,000 square foot home, or square foot facility with all of this strip retail. That is not what is being requested whatsoever.
There's no way they're going to be able to sell computers out of that building right now. It's not going to be able to be done. They're going to have to go towards this strip retail center that you're talking about here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, guys, I'm going to call this back into commission. We've carried on this long enough. Any comments from the commissioners?
I'm against a drive-through, and I just don't think that ever would fit in here. Also, in the past, we have never, ever, ever given somebody carte blanche without some sort of plan on what they're going to do to approve that, and, and to make sure that that looks nice and have some control over, you know, and put restrictions on that. And so, you know, I, I just, I don't think I can vote for the conditional use permit with, with what they're asking right now, because I don't think they could sell office equipment and stuff like that out of there without changing the building, which they're going to have to come before us to do that anyway. So whenever they're ready to do that, if they're ready to do that, then we will look at that then. But I, I just don't think I can support just giving carte blanche over. We might do this sometime in the future.
I think you pay your internet bill on the internet.
Yeah, I don't think a drive-through is necessary for, for anybody like in this type of business.
Conway court might disagree with you on that one.
I pay my Conway court.
You have any comments?
I have plenty of comments.
Second, they're walking in and paying the bill. If they're going to go in, drive through, they're going to just park in and pay, go inside and pay either way, you know.
So, I completely agree with Brian in that precedent of this commission has always been with conditional use permit. We have a full, very well-thought-out plan in front of us that includes the full intention of the applicant before us, before voting and approving something to move forward into consideration from the city council. My request of the commission tonight is that all of the motions for this have to be in the positive, so I would request that we build the suggested conditions up as if we, as if this was fully going to go forward to the city council and they were to approve it. So I still want us to take the best interest of the, the residents in mind and build all of the suggested conditions as necessary.
So, strike out the drive-through payment window, number seven, on the staff comments.
Why, why is everyone seem to be against a drive-through window? Because Conway Corp, if we were to broaden that, does have drive-through windows today for payments of, up to and including internet service.
Everybody in Conway has Conway Corp. Even the old people who don't know.
Correct.
Well...
But, but it's, it's her, it's her motion, right? So, make it how...
But it's, it's less about computers and more about the internet portion of the business.
I think for me, it's more about the location of this facility, from the drive-through facility. I think that I'm not in favor of seven or four, really, here until I have a better plan.
Yeah, I'd say strike out seven and restricted. Anything that they're not doing now should be stricken from...
Yep.
Do we get a plan? They do have retail. So they're doing, that AT&amp;T's, I got you, I got you. So are they doing one and two, they're doing one and two only right now?
They're doing one, two, five, and six.
Five and six. Not three, not three.
Three or four.
Yeah, I'll give you three too.
So three, four, and seven, strike. I agree.
I mean, I'm not, if you come back to me with a plan for those, I'm not opposed.
Yeah, if you come back to me with a plan, then it's, you know, something nice, and, you know, then maybe we, I mean, I'm not saying...
But I got to be able to protect these...
But I got to see it.
Yeah, I got to be able to protect these people out of here, out here, or, I mean, they got homes there.
So right now, it's...
Are there any...
Requested. I don't feel like we can...
Are there any suggested conditions around hour of operations?
No, because AT&amp;T, on an emergency, can work weekends and come in at night and get their equipment and go...
That's only on an emergency basis.
We don't want them to continue to do that, yeah. I want them to continue to be able to do that.
I don't want to restrict AT&amp;T from being able to go help people from hurricane victims if, because they got to wait till eight the next morning to go get their stuff.
Or even us, as local residents, so.
I just leave that alone.
Are there any suggested condition, or suggested conditions around restricting the conditional use to the applicant?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Well, I don't think it's fair to change what AT&amp;T is doing based on somebody who doesn't even own this right now's request.
All motions still have to be made in the positive, though, so we have to, we have to build this.
I mean...
And I appreciate that. However, we still have to propose something that...
I don't...
Provides our intent to the city council.
I will make a motion to approve with the stat, with the conditions that it remain contractor, general or heavy construction facilities other than office, contractor's facilities, utility facility, warehousing, and that the use be restricted only to Computer Works. We don't have to worry about hours of operation because they're not going to have any retail, right? We don't have to worry about that.
Right.
And, any parking lot expansion must be approved by the planning staff and make development review standards, no additional curb cuts along Salem Road, we don't have to worry about four because that's not happening, and no outdoor sound system.
Then you have to say, then you have to say AT&amp;T or Computer Works?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, this conditional use only applies to Computer Works, because they're the ones...
The applicant.
No. Yeah, true. Because they act...
None of this applies to AT&amp;T, because they're not asking.
So I second.
But it affects them, it just doesn't apply to them.
I second what she just...
Can you clarify that weirdness for us, Brian? The weirdness is, the applicant before us is Jackson Wilson of the Computer Works. So if we put a condition or a suggested condition on there around it remaining with the applicant, who would we then make it responsible for?
I think I shy away from that one, because that, that does make it kind of strange, because the applicant is not actually the current leaseholder.
Right.
So...
Actually doesn't have anything to do with the property at all.
I mean, you could add the condition as originally said, use restricted to Computer Works, which really kind of makes it move until such time as Computer Works might move in, but if y'all are wanting to see it again before they move in, may just want to leave that one alone.
Okay.
Okay.
There are motions, sir.
Who seconded it?
I stand by my motion and Delancy second.
Condition the current owner.
So there's a motion on the floor, has been seconded in. Motion states that the applicant requests a conditional use permit and RU1 at 2010 Salem Road, with conditional uses that the contractor, general or heavy construction facilities other than office, contractor, special trade facilities, utility facilities, and warehousing. Did I state that right?
Mm-hmm, and...
Two, three, and five on the back page.
Yeah, two to three and five on the back page. Those conditions.
Two, three, and five on the back page.
All is in favor? All is opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails. All right.
So the zoning has changed, but nothing else will change on that property. Nothing else, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is request to rezone.
You're going to have to ask them to get out of here.
Guys, if you're going to leave, if you could please leave, we got, still got business.
And don't talk until you're out of the building.
Specifically 500 feet from the front door. Request to rezone from RMH to C3 2740, Dave Ward Drive.
Mr. My name is David White. I work for the toddler group at a 240 Skyline here in Conway. And we've got a piece of property out here on Dave Ward Drive, five and a half acres where, that's currently zoned for mobile homes, you know, we would like to get a C3 zoning on it. It's on the side of a major arterial, it just kind of, you know, make, make sense to have, have it as commercial, as opposed to any residence, we think. I know the, the planning department had a, had a, I guess, had a couple issues with the comprehensive plan, and behind it is zoned MF3, to the west of it is zoned MF3, across the road is zoned C3, and we're just asking for the same C3 zoning. And I know the comprehensive plan does show it as MF3, but there's cases in Conway where the comprehensive plan hasn't, I guess, hasn't been followed. The Starbucks just right down the road, it's, according to the comprehensive plan, it's, it's in MF3. The new Steak 'n Shake, it's in MF3, according to the comprehensive plan. So I'm not sure why we're being restricted by the comprehensive plan here. There's also the, the, the traffic count. We do have one, I guess, potential customer here, the car mart is looking to put in a lot here, and they would take up a little over two acres of the site, and they're not going to generate a whole lot of, a whole lot of vehicle trips per day. I would say a hundred, two hundred, you know, would probably be a good day on that. So I know the 6,500 vehicles is, is projected at the high end of it, but just taking, you know, forty percent of the slot is car mart, and that, that would jump that down to 4,000 vehicle trips easily, you know. But I guess if there's any technical questions on it, I'm, I'm here to answer anything.
Are there any mobile homes are on this lot?
No, ma'am, all the mobile homes have been removed. There, there's some rent houses up, up along Dave Ward Drive there, but, you know, they're, they're getting kind of, they're kind of old, getting in bad condition. And the apartment complex to the west, I believe is an old Lindsay apartment complex. It's not in the greatest, greatest condition either. So redevelopment on this property is, is going to happen, you know, and I just think C3 is probably the best, the best option here.
Anybody else to speak in favor of this?
I'm Brian Trent, 12 Gentar Farm Road, Greenbrier. I'm the owner of the property. Whenever we got this property, it was, you know, we had it for a while to develop it. Obviously, there's MF3 in the back, we don't own that anymore, but the property on the front on a major highway, you know, just, there's C3 across the street. I have a tenant here that is under contract, providing that this property gets rezoned to put a car mart on. He can give you more details about that. It's not taking up the whole property, just kind of a portion of it, but our plans are to develop one or two more lots around it, you know, something commercial. I don't have tenants yet, but start one and others will come, I hope, so that's the plan. I don't know if anybody's got questions about it, or any ideas. He can tell you more about what they're wanting to do on just two acres of it. There's five total, actually five and a half, but he's going to take up about two of it, Like he said, it's a major road. I know traffic always is sometimes a concern, but that's a major, I mean, the highway department designed that to handle traffic. Y'all know it goes all up and down, east and west, and handles tons of traffic. This is not really a high-volume traffic business. Well, I hate to say that. I'll let you say that. Hopefully it is, but I guess for them, but, you know, there's a turn there that gets you in and out of the property safely. So I think it's a, I think it's the highest and best use for that property. I mean, you're not going to put houses up on a major highway. There's apartments behind it, apartments to the west of it, a church to the other side. I mean, that just makes sense, you know, so I hope you think so as well, so.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yeah.
My name is Ed Gerardo, 802 Southeast Plaza, Bentonville, Arkansas. So basically, what I've got here is a conceptual plan, kind of shows the idea of what we would like to do to develop the property. Sorry, I should have...
So just the whole five acres here? And this is the part that you're going to take up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The conceptual plan shows a drive that's in the front of the property, and because of the medians and the flow of traffic, and basically what we're showing is a right turn only going out of the property and a right turn in only coming in the property. There's also a side, a drive that's on the side that goes back to the apartment complexes. We're also showing traffic utilization out of that side as well. So, and that would be an in, in, and out, where it's not into the main artery of the, of the highway. Again, that was just a conceptual plan, just to, to bring in front of you. Obviously, we know that when we go through the development process, that'd be, we'd be working with the planning department to assess all of the needs of traffic and water detainage and all the good stuff that comes with developing the property. We definitely have a, you know, a big vested interest here in Conway. We've been here for over thirty years, and we're looking to expand in this market and continue to, to grow jobs and, and keep a good foothold here in, in Conway. And we appreciate your consideration and the opportunity to do business with Mr. Trent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else to speak in favor of this? Anybody to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, I'll call this back into commission. Commissioners, what say you?
I don't have a problem with Car Mart going there on Dave Ward. I mean, commercial or MF3 or MF1, I think any of those would kind of be appropriate in this area. I don't know. What is the worst-case scenario on C3?
A convenience store with gas pumps would be-
It gets zoned to C3 and basically, you know, Car Mart, uh, maybe the deal falls through, whatever, and you've got five acres of C3 there. It could be another Come and Go, a Burger King, a Wendy's, or whatever. I mean, just pick your fast food place, but you got five acres to develop there. So that's potentially at least, I'm guessing, three pretty high-traffic businesses potentially could go there. I mean, if you're trying to get the most bang for your buck there, you'll get, uh, the drive-through type places or a convenience store or something like that. Possibly, you know, convenience stores like Corner, so they may not be interested in that piece of property. But, but that'd be the worst-case scenario would be a convenience store with gas pumps, basically.
So is this drive that goes back to the apartments, is that a private drive? They own that easement?
Do you not have access to it at this time?
I'm sorry, you don't have access to-
The Grove.
Oh, okay, okay.
And, you know, one of the bigger reasons that the, um, planning staff recommends against it is the, the comprehensive plan shows a node system through the city. And at major intersections, if you look at the comprehensive plan, we've got some nodes of neighborhood shopping, um, major shopping, um, et cetera. And I believe this one is shown as the neighborhood node. I've got that in the write-up. But, um, yeah, neighborhood shopping. So the idea is we don't strip out the roads, basically, like Oak Street and Hark Rider and others that we've done in the past. We, we try to not do that these days. So the idea is to limit your commercial to the major intersections. And, um, the neighborhood shopping node that's shown here is supposed to allow up to fifteen to twenty acres of commercial activity. And right now, there's at least sixteen point eight acres of commercial activity already, C3 zone, um, at that intersection. So that's one of the reasons why, um, we, we recommend denial of this just by the fact that it's C3, most intensive shopping, um, that's allowed, that it would add five more acres to it. It wouldn't be huge over the total, but it does add more than what's called for, for this node at this corner.
What's a more restrict, or what's the next restricted down from C3?
Well, you could go for C2, but then that doesn't allow car sales. C3 is the only zone that really allows car sales.
You did like a C2, then you'd have to do a conditional use permit for-
We don't offer it. It's pretty much C3 or nothing when it comes to car sales.
C3 or nothing.
It should be C3. You can't brush it out.
Could we, could we zone just the two acres to C3 and leave the other what it is until we kind of know what's there? You know, that, you know, we haven't really carte blanche stuff. We, we don't have plans.
Correct.
Like I said in the last one, but, like, I don't have a problem with the Car Mart going in there. You know, it's just commercial all over there, and I don't think it's any worse. I think it's actually probably less traffic than a MF. So if you do that-
Yes, you, you can always decrease the request because you can't increase it. So they could decrease it to just a legal description of that car lot area.
Is that something that y'all would be interested in?
I think so. I have a footprint, kind of just the Car Mart on the lot.
The thing I'm concerned about is that there cannot be, there can only be, there can be no more than one curb cut.
For that whole thing?
Yeah, I mean-
The whole five acre?
Can I say something?
Yes.
We've got that kind of, I don't know what drawing you're-
Come on down to the microphone, please.
What drawing you're actually looking at, the one that has the, does that have a little shaded? My idea is to really just have two lots that really face the road. Now, what you're seeing is, is a road that kind of is right in the middle, that goes back, makes a turn, and comes out on that drive. So there's, you're talking about, the reference was Oak Street and lots of, at most, two businesses. He's gonna take up two-thirds of it. So there's gonna be one lot left that's up there. And then there's gonna be that, that area kind of in the back, the roads.
Right.
You know, it's gonna turn. So I'm not just filling the whole thing with, you know, a huge shopping mall. You know, it's, it's, I'm trying to split it up into, that's my intent, you know, to have several lots. Most of it'll be off the street. There's only gonna be two lots. This one that's gonna, those three old houses you see there, and there's an old driveway. You're talking about curb cuts. So I took this, whenever we looked at this, there's an old gravel drive that goes through there, almost kind of in the middle of the property. That's essentially kind of where the road's gonna go back. So you're not really adding any cut. In fact, we're gonna remove maybe even some cuts, less cuts. So if you're heading east, you're gonna make a left into that drive. And obviously, if you're heading west, you're just gonna pull right into the property. So, and the only kind of road we're adding is kind of right there in the middle. So you're actually reducing-
Cut's gonna go on the edge of Car Mart and access that whole, like, like a cul-de-sac almost-looking thing to access this whole thing.
Hmm.
This is a- This is just a little drawing, but anyway.
Right.
I drew this a long time ago. So this is assuming, assuming they're gonna take, because it was lines. They're gonna take one-
And that's what he's showing there on that one, too.
This is the drive that's gonna grow the park. This is, this is currently a drive. There's some curb cuts into here. I, they're probably gonna do away with all, or maybe, they might have one entrance coming off the road. I don't know yet. So where that existing gravel drive is, there's a big house that's right here. This is gonna turn into-
Whatever else.
This will be a drive, turn, and then, I don't know, I just, this is either one or two or three lots.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So you're, so the way you propose right now, you've got it possibly turning into, of course, he would take up one and two. So this takes up his, and then you still have four more potential parcels.
Maybe, or, or, or one, or two.
Depending on what you attract.
If I get, you know, one, nine, ten, whatever they want there, you know, on the front, because that's my other corner lot. That goes with, you know, premier top blocks. And the stuff in the back, they wind up being
So then that would be only-
So one, so one could- He's just saying he's reducing.
Right. So Brian, if we, if we vote this in, and if we did say excluding no gas stations allowed, can we take, we can't take those off the table. I mean, I actually can't imagine a Come and Go putting it on, knock the corner.
I mean, there's a, there's a Come and Go one mile down. I can tell you, I can tell you there's not gonna be a Come and Go, you know.
Bears didn't Come and Go on each side.
Yeah, I mean, that's-
Probably not, but, you know, that's the worst-case scenario. But, um, the, um, oh, zoning. So no, with the zoning, you can't put conditions on it. It is what it is. You get what the package of C3 gives you, you get by right. So there's, you can't limit to C3, basically. And I will point out, too, I mean, this is getting into weeds, I guess you could say, because zoning is one thing and developing the property is another. But I'll just point out so everybody knows that, that this is on Dave Ward Drive, which has an access management plan. So any curb cut less than three hundred feet away from any other curb cut has to be approved by the city, the highway department, and Metro Plan. And Metro Plan's been pretty good sticklers about this. So I'm just warning everybody on the front end. They're probably gonna say, why can't you use that driveway that goes into those apartments and then split off and go into-
And that's, that's what our intention is, is, is less, not more. Except for the, you know, the curb cut that's-
I just point all that out, so everybody's on record to know that there's maybe difficulties coming when the driveway part of it comes, if the zoning happens. But that's, like I say, that's further down the road. Y'all are looking at the land use right now. That's more-
Well, that's why I asked about the driveway.
So Brian, if we go, well, if we go back to-
And driveways, you know, the site plans are all great, but when you talk about a zoning, it doesn't mean anything because that plan could go away tomorrow, and you could put in whatever the heck goes in C3. So-
Correct.
That's the bottom line on it.
But again, you know, I point out that we're, intent is to have less probably curb cuts, not, not adding. I can guarantee that, but that's where that, where that gravel drive is, is already an existing wide curb cut. I think wide enough for a street. So we tried to incorporate that. I've been through this before, and that's, that's all what curb cuts are.
But you were saying we could reduce the request down to just fit what we have in front of us, but then we still open up to, to, you know, if they pull out tomorrow, it can turn into anything else.
Well, it's under contract. It's signed. So it's, I mean, I, I mean, I understand.
And condition of, I mean, what's the, not with the terms and condition, but how long is the contract?
Well, it's, it's, it's-
If it's approved, how long do you testify?
Yeah, it's all conditioned on you guys' action, you know.
So did you do like a ten-year, fifteen lease, or?
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty, twenty lease?
Potential, potential.
Potential, potential, okay.
Ten with potential for twenty, so, you know.
The problem that you run into with just narrowing it down to that specific portion is that you still leave this weird L-shaped- that's a hodgepodge mess.
Yeah, and that's-
That's a hodgepodge mess.
And hopefully have another potential contract that we could review at that time.
Correct. Or, or by right of manufactured homes today, they could decide to throw however many are allowed in that weird L-shaped lot right around Car Mart.
I would really like to get rid of manufactured homes, if at all possible. So I realize the fear of a gas station, but I, that's just not gonna happen. There's no way they're gonna put that knot on a corner. So-
Well-
And other things that I'm fearful of aren't that big of a deal as compared to a mobile home park.
We don't want that.
Every right to do right now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not saying C3 is the best thing in the world, only thing-
Or duplexes.
Well, I wanted, I wanted to point out that Brian said that the, the plan was to have retail on the intersection corners. And we have that now at that corner. The only other C3 is that nasty tire place and that Italian slash Mexican slash ice cream that I don't know what is even in there now.
BBs, Burs.
See, that's the only other C3 on that street.
That's about to change, too, though. That's about to change, too, the Italian place, yeah.
This is gonna be way better than what's around.
Oh, I just don't like the idea of a car. Oh.
Do you want a mobile home park?
No, I don't want that either.
Well, they're gonna make money on it somehow, and if that's all we're giving them, they're gonna put the mobile homes in there.
No.
I can't handle that.
No.
I've gotta get away from, and, and, and I wish we could put restrictions on it, and I think Brian's rules are silly about that.
It's not Brian's rules.
I think we need to rewrite those rules. We rewrote them not too long ago. So anyway, I think this is better than a mobile home park. That's my opinion. And put restrictions on whatever we can put restriction on that Brian says I can't.
Not a single one.
So I, I'm just saying, I'd rather have this than mobile home park.
I hear ya.
And it's better than what else is around there. And I think with that L-shaped thing, it's gonna end up being a strip little shopping center that is gonna have insurance agents and a real estate office and a-
Chinese place.
Yeah, that's what's gonna fit it in around there. So I, I just don't have a problem with this versus mobile homes.
Would you like to make a motion, Mr. Quinn?
I would make a motion to approve-
Well, hold on, did we hear anybody closing?
With, uh, the restriction on, um, whatever you, we need to do on-
Wait, 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 we can't make a motion. I gotta make, I gotta call for a position.
You never ask.
The curb cut thing's just automatic.
Okay, so we don't have anything to do with that. Sorry, you wanna see anybody oppose? I can see anybody else really good.
I don't think there's anybody to oppose. I think he came up. I think I did call for our position.
Okay.
Just bring it back in commission.
I just wanted to make sure we're done with him.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Now, make your motion.
Speak it.
Make your motion.
I make a motion to approve. Look, any restrictions?
There's a motion on the floor to approve. By Brian, has been seconded by Brooks.
Please don't let mobile homes go in here.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Wow.
Are we done?
No. Keep your rear right there.
All right. Lastly, request to rezone from R2A to O3, 1904 Washington Avenue.
I hope that, uh, everything we say tonight is gonna be met with a lot of discussion and that y'all want to stay here till ten, ten-thirty. It's fine. I'm Bo Wilcox. I've been before, most of y'all before. Uh, new address, office 1315 Main Street here in Conway. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Willow Bayou LLC and its proprietor Jimmy New on this request on 1904 Washington Avenue. Uh, the first thing I want to point out is, is that I think in your planning report, you will notice that there's opposition to this, um, based on what I would characterize as sort of that domino effect potential of the residential character of the properties along Washington Avenue sort of being slowly chipped away at or eroded. Uh, one of the things I want to mention sort of as a, as a, an immediate rebuttal to that is, is that this property was owned by a lady who, I believe, for at least the last two or three years of her life, and I'm, and I'm going off of just some common knowledge here, so I don't want to make any hard and fast representations about this, but this home has been vacant for a period of time. Um, many months, if not years. My client purchased the property from the heirs of the estate, and his intent and what he is going to do and is already in the process of doing is refurbishing the home. Contrary to what any rumor or speculation might be, he has no intention of tearing it down or dismantling it. What he wants to do is, uh, sort of restore its old glory. It's roughly a seventeen hundred square foot house. Uh, you all are very familiar, I know, with sort of the, uh, character and the, and the mixed use of the area around Washington. Now, directly across Washington from this property is a, uh, an appraisal business. Uh, there are also multifamily duplexes and homes along Washington. Uh, just due north of the property on Washington is the law office of one of my good friends and colleagues, Fritzi Vaman. She's on the corner of, um, I don't remember which streets it is. You guys could probably fill me in on that one, but- That's right, Harden. Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Anyway, my client's property is on the corner of Washington and Gist Street. As you all well know, also, Mr. Rhett Thompson has a, a real estate office there on the, on the recently constructed roundabout there where Clifton and, and Washington kind of converge. So this usage that he's proposing with quiet office, O3, um, is not going to generate much, if any, additional traffic. I know that, speaking as a lawyer and someone who has, what I try to maintain is a quiet office, but sometimes it gets loud in there, um, you know, you're, you're not going to expect a great deal of additional traffic. Uh, the, the, the advantage, if you will, of this property is that the driveway is off of Gist. So in, in other words, this is not a circumstance where any potential clients or, uh, individuals who would be frequenting this potential business would be coming in and, 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 you know, coming off of Washington and creating a logjam or disrupting the flow of traffic on Washington. They just come straight onto Gist and, and park on the side there. Uh, the house has been in grave disrepair for a long time. I mean, regardless of what you all's decision tonight is, uh, Mr. Mr. New has been making active efforts to get it, you know, rehabilitated and get it in a position fit for occupancy by some tenant. Uh, he does envision it as its best use as being an office space. We certainly respect and understand the, the arguments about, you know, eroding the residential character of, of Washington. But I had a similar issue, uh, that came up, um, before you all several years ago on a property on Dave Ward that was, um, a single-family residence, like a lot of things were on Dave Ward at that time. And when Come and Go came in and sort of changed the dynamic there, um, it was nearby and, and even though it wasn't within the 2025 plan as being rezoned quiet office, you all elected to, to approve that request kind of on the same principle, which was, we really don't know that this is going to create any kind of a slippery slope. There are still several people that obviously reside on Washington and occupy those residences as their primary residences and, and may forever. But, um, but as far as the, um, the current condition of the property and my client's desires, again, he doesn't want to re, you know, he does not want to do anything from a demolition standpoint. He wants to rehabilitate it, make it, um, you know, uh, something, something worth looking at again. And there's a lot of properties I know that you all are aware of on Washington that, that need that kind of attention. And that's, that's his desire and his intent with this. But I'll certainly entertain any questions as well.
I think you're good for now.
Y'all act like you've been here for a- Y'all act like you've been here for a while, and don't have, and that you're exhausted at this point.
You have anything for me to add?
Don't ask. So his intent is not to tear that thing down, but to restore it and leave it where it is?
That is correct. And I think he's even told me tonight that he would sign something. And in being his attorney, I've told him, don't sign anything. Uh, but no, he, Jimmy has told me tonight that, you know, he's, he's very optimistic that, that he can, number one, have the rehabilitation of, of the property done within a matter of days, if not weeks. Um, but he's hoping that, you know, that it would be an attractive potential spot for, you know, your typical law, you know, small-town lawyer, accountant, insurance agent, something of that, along those lines. Uh, something that would certainly not be disruptive to the surrounding properties and surrounding property owners, but would just, uh, be a good, you know, again, going back to the whole principles of highest and best use, that that's what he thinks it would be. And I think that, given the historical, um, um, character of this house, that he wants to, you know, bring that back up to, to speed and, and, and make it, um, make it aesthetically pleasing again.
What's the current square footage of the existing structure? So-
1,700.
Do we have that?
It's approximately 1,700 square feet, I believe.
It says on here 16.
16, okay, I see it now, okay.
Yeah, it sure does.
Any other questions for Bo? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bo.
No, no, no.
Is that your vote?
No, no, no. Anybody else to speak in favor of this?
If Siri's gonna speak in opposition, we, I've got, this is, this is a new one on me. I don't really know how to deal with her, so.
We don't.
I might wanna wait just a minute on that train.
We own the property next door. And I just wanna make sure that I understand what restricted means.
Sir, can we get your name and address?
Dennis Williams, owner of 1910 Washington Avenue.
Thank you.
That's not where I live. We just rent to a newlywed couple that plan on having a family, I'm sure. And we wanna make sure that things like, uh, a, um, halfway house or a, uh, parole officer or, uh, anything that would bring in the wrong kind of people to a family next door. So, can you give me a strict definition-
Brian?
-of O-3?
Bail's office, so it could be a doctor's office, like say attorney, or court day.
Well, Fritzi Voman's next door, so I mean-
Fritzi Voman, I mean, that's, that's what her property's under, is O3, so it's a typical office.
But it wouldn't restrict it from a parole officer's office or a bail bondsman's office or anything like that? I just have to depend on Mr. New to take care of that.
Yeah, I don't know about bail bondsman, uh, I mean, if someone's got a, if the county wanted to rent it, or whoever would rent for probation officer or that kind of thing, I don't, I think that would fit in that scope of office. It's, as long as they're, they're doing office-type business.
I just wanted to get it clarified.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Diane Robins. I live at 1204 Winfield Street, which is part of the Hendrix College Edition. As many of you are aware, the Hendrix College Edition is the oldest platted subdivision in, in our city, the oldest residential, platted residential neighborhood in our city. Um, and our concern are exactly what Mr. Wilcox anticipated, is, is the domino effect. When Fritzi Voman bought her, um, her office and got it rezoned, we were very concerned about that, but we're assured that it was not the beginning of, of the, uh, the domino effect. And yet we see this continuing down the street on Washington Street. It's residential property on either side. We are extremely grateful for the remodeling, because the, the building has been in very poor shape, and we're grateful for that. But we, we believe that the highest and best use for that is, is still as, as residential, as part of that residential neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're running out of people.
I'm pretty sure I'm the last from the neighborhood. Alyssa Douglas, 1810 Washington, and we live directly on the other side of Gist. So our bedroom window looks into the drive.
On Jefferson?
On Gist.
We're on Washington and Gist.
Okay, good.
And the-
On the other corner.
On the other corner, yes. And they're on Washington, they're on Washington and Gist too. It's not a through street, so we're the only, only two on those corners. Um, and I, I'm not necessarily opposed. Um, I wish it wasn't gonna be a rental. I wish, like Fritzi, we know she owns the property, so we know what the business is. We know, because when you get a rental, you have that unknown quantity. And then you have, you know, we do have some rental homes in our neighborhood. Those tend to be the homes where we have problems, where we have issues, um, because it's not the owner. And you, you lose that, that. Um, but I will say, as somebody who's bedroom looks onto that property, it's set vacant for over two years. And Mrs. Yarborough was in a nursing home, and she did not have any living children. And then she died, and the home stayed vacant. And according to the people who've been working on it, who are very, very nice, gone over and talked to them multiple times, very nice. When they got in there, there were people living in the home, had broken through windows and were living in the home. And so, very happy work is being done. And the people who are working are very polite and very nice. Um, so, just wish we knew who was going in, um, but I'm pleased to see that. And then we gotta get the one on the other side of us fixed. As I think everybody knows, the I-4 1816 Washington that's set vacant for over 10 years, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully that'll be next. Work on that one too. Thank you.
You can look up their name on the accessory.
Thank you.
He said Ariana. Anybody else? I don't think there's anybody else here. Marilyn Black, where's she at?
Who?
All right, I'm gonna call us back in the commission.
I mean, I love the idea of these quiet offices on Donaghy and Washington. I think they're perfect. And if you want people putting money into these places and fixing them up, and they need it along that area, this is the best way to get that done. Quiet offices, quiet offices are maintained way better, better than most rentals, um, in my opinion. So-
Well-
Sometimes residential can be even worse than these quiet offices.
Well, don't disagree, but do we have to change the zoning to accomplish that? That's my question. So why, why would, why would we, I mean, a conditional use-
Office in R2A.
A conditional use permit could, could be the same, right? We've done those countless times.
You do a conditional-
There is an option to do it as a conditional use permit, restricted office.
Right. We've done those, you know, we've done those countless times when, you know, someone has a, someone has a tenant that they've identified, and we've done, I mean, we did that on Donaghy, right? So, you know, the, the counselor that's down there on the far end, so we granted them a conditional use permit. It stayed with the owner.
Person.
Right. And so, then it doesn't just transfer into, and so then the, then the neighborhood is retained, right? Here, we're, we're losing control.
Is that, is that the best use for this property, though? I mean, if he's retaining ownership, I don't know.
He's retaining- That's the question. I'm not, I'm saying that I'm not opposed to that kind of thing. But if our concern is to the domino effect, then why would we not go that? Why was, why do we not take that tack instead of this one?
I tend to take a, and I think my record shows, I tend to take a more aggressive approach on non-contributing parcels in the historic district, just because there's more leeway. But I have concerns, since this is a, strictly a contributing member or contributing structure of the historic district, um, that we would change any of its original intent and original usage, it being a contributing member. Those are my concerns. Has nothing to do with the, the rentals of the office space and all that jazz.
I just think if you're gonna continue to promote these things getting fixed up, so, the best way to do that is to, is quiet office.
I like the conditional use as a quiet office.
I don't think people are gonna put, you know, tens of thousands of dollars into, just to have a 1,700 square foot house in the historic district, you know, on a corner anymore.
That would be incorrect. You can look on Donaghy where they have that $240,000.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that people won't do that.
That they just fixed up.
But I think there's, there's enough stuff already going on on Washington that people are not gonna pick that. They're gonna pick Oliver Street or, you know, somewhere where there's not-
A little more off the main.
Right. Washington is too, too much of a main track.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that you can't have an office there. I'm just saying, why would we change the zoning?
Well, we can accomplish the same thing with a conditional use.
I didn't know. You could ask for a conditional use on a residential, I guess.
Things that are worth tiers, that allow you to get to a restricted office by a conditional use permit. You get some conditions you're supposed to look at to go with it, like hours of operation.
Exactly.
Signage, architectural compatibility, the terms of conditional use, like who's going to own it, lighting, parking lot, sidewalks, those things are all things you're supposed to look at as part of that conditional use permit. But the idea is that you can put conditions on it so that you say-
Exactly.
Can't tear it down, or that kind of stuff, so. So you're saying he needs to find, so you're saying he needs to find a tenant first, and then come to us and ask for a strict use for that?
And then every time that he changes tenants, he's gonna have to come back?
Well, no, they could convey just to him, it could convey to him. My point is, if we give this just to an office, it's gonna stay that way in perpetuity, and we have no control over what happens to this property after this meeting.
Correct.
And it just, I mean, that, that's our choice, but I'm just making that point.
I just don't have a problem with quiet office in this area.
As the, as the chairman, I'm just making that point.
Also works, but I don't have a problem with this.
But I think what Jerry's saying, you can get it either way. But if you go with the latter, you get, you're up to-
I'm just making-
You just have more control over it.
More safe conditional use.
Yeah, for the neighborhood, I'm saying, it could be done with more control by this committee.
Yeah.
Or we can choose to go this way. You guys decide.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
Somebody second it, and then if it votes down, we'll know that.
Bo, I think it hears a second. If we vote this down, they can't come before us for a year. Right. Unless we turn around and get a two-thirds vote, they'll say you can bring it back in less than a year's time with that conditional use permit.
Which I don't think anybody would have a problem with.
So that'd be the thing, is if they vote down, they'll need a two-thirds vote to provide it back in less than a year's time. Do we vote on that now?
Yeah, that's not fair to him. We don't do that.
Right now, that they can come back?
I would. I'd entertain that.
If you do the vote, call for it on O3 office straight up, and if that fails, y'all can walk away from it. It's gotta wait a year's time. Or you can turn around and get a two-thirds vote, and you can bring it back in less than a year's time for that other. Yeah, that would need to happen now. I mean, you can come back next month and ask for it, but it's-
So if it doesn't get the two-thirds vote, he can't come back in and propose a different zoning?
He can't come back and ask anything on this property for a whole year?
Yeah.
For the zoning, unless we-
Well, no, for anything.
Well-
Or, you know, the conditional use.
Unless we-
You get a two-thirds vote.
Correct.
Well, I made a motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor to approve, and it has been seconded by Delentia. It's to approve as is.
Jerry, let me, before we go to the vote, can you just explain that one more time, so I'm clear on what we're doing and what, what we, what we may be potentially doing?
So, what, what the proposal is, is that on the floor is that to vote as is. What Brian has suggested is that if we choose to vote this down, um, because we would prefer to have a conditional use permit instead, is that we can, instead of waiting and make it, making him wait a year to come back, we can then subsequently follow this vote up with another vote to, uh, which would need a two-thirds majority to pass, to allow him to bring it back.
So she doesn't have to include that in her original?
No, no.
We vote on this and then-
It would be, it would be a subsequent vote, should this fail.
Got you. Okay. I'm clear.
Everybody clear?
Yeah.
Clear.
All right. I'm gonna call this to a vote, 'cause it is on the floor. It has been seconded. Alls in favor? Opposed?
Nay.
Hands. I'm gonna need to see hands.
Hands on the nays.
I thought you were voting nay.
What are we doing now?
All those opposed.
Everybody but me and Brian, and Brooks.
All right. I'm gonna say it fails.
I'd like to make a motion to allow them to come back in less than a year.
I'll second that.
That's seconded.
There you go.
All right.
Wait.
Woo, woo!
And I would specify the conditional use permit.
For the conditional use.
I'm thinking something else, another zone or whatever. But if you want them to come back with this use permit, then I would say that, that's my suggestion, that you- I'm making a motion that they come back with a different zoning.
It'd be silly for them to come back with another office zoning request if this one got shot down.
Okay. I make a motion that they can come back within a year with a conditional use.
I don't know if I'm supposed to second that or am I in it or what?
Period.
Whatever. I'm for it.
Are you seconding that, Brandon?
I will second that motion.
You got that?
Yeah, I'll have to get some else have it.
Can I get a quick question here in about parliamentary procedure on this? 'Cause this is baffling to me a little bit. If, 'cause Brian mentioned the two-thirds component of this, and we have one member absent tonight. So-
Two-thirds of people present.
Okay. So, my understanding is, is that if, if with the motion that Mr. Quinn has made, that six votes would give him the ability to come back with a conditional use permit within a year. And when you say within a year, that could be next month.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
You got it.
That's the clarification I wanted, so.
So, Brian made a motion, and Brandon has seconded that he can come back with a conditional use permit within a year.
For restricted office.
For restricted, I mean, uh, yeah, for a conditional use-
conditional use permit.
For restricted office.
For restricted office.
Is what he, is what he stated his request.
Okay.
Period.
It's getting late, guys.
It is. Okay, so let's call a vote.
So it does require a two-thirds majority. Any other question? Any other question? All right, I'm gonna call the vote. Please raise your hand so we can see this. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Nay.
Okay. If it passes, you can come back next month.
Got you. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further business, I would make a motion to adjourn. I second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. See what happened when you skipped a lot?